Good evening and welcome. I am going to reconvene the Yakima City Council regular meeting for March 4th, 2025. We'll have roll call again, please.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
DeCio.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next we'll have interpreter services.
Yes, good evening. Si alguien necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, tenemos el sistema y estoy aquí para ayudar. I'm here to help if somebody needs it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. There will be 35 minutes allotted for public comment with two and a half minutes per speaker in order to allow as much opportunity as possible for audience participation. Written communication and email messages are strongly encouraged. When you come up to the podium, please give us your name and the where you live, city or county. Thank you. So first is going to be Commissioner Kyle Curtis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember staff. Kyle Curtis, Yakima County Commissioner. Tonight, my comments are directed towards the resolution expressing concerns on the performance of our Yakima County Homeless Coalition. I've been a part of this group for the past year and a half as your commissioner, and I can tell you that this group consists of some of the most dedicated, professional and committed community members who all strive with the common goal to make homelessness in Yakima County as brief and rare as possible. If this was an easy task, we wouldn't be here tonight. When I look at the resolution presented, I see a resolution that stems from frustration. Frustration in what we are seeing on our streets, frustration with the failures on parts of the system, frustration with the process, and frustration with what our businesses and community members are experiencing. I too am frustrated. Just like many of you, due to this frustration is why I have spent countless hours meeting, touring, and asking questions, tough questions, of every program and service provider in our homeless response system, spending countless hours with law enforcement, business leaders, first responders, and community members to do my best to be as educated as possible on the complexities of this system. A majority of the reforms requested in the resolution I support and/or have already been implemented, reforming the structure, setting performance benchmarks moving forward, getting greater input from our cities are all things I fully support. There is one area of the resolution, however, that I do challenge, and that is in regards to the program administrator. The county's Human Services Department has some of the most dedicated and professional public servants I know who understand the objectives of your commissioners and who have made great strides in the way that we track data, manage our contracts, and ensure that we are fiscally responsible in our county. We do not need a different entity to run the day-to-day administration of contracts and funds, but rather, I agree with the resolution that we need to think seriously about empowering a strategic project coordinator, a project coordinator that has no ties to government, and one that is centered around delivering our defined outcomes in a specific amount of time, someone who frankly isn't afraid of putting themselves out of a job. I ask that as community leaders, we use our frustration to help bring tangible solutions to the table and that we continue to work together as we always have. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next is Scott Stephens.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I'm Scott Stephens, city dweller, and I'm here to voice my support of the no confidence vote considering the Coalition, the Homeless Coalition Group. And I support your decision for a no confidence vote. And basically, I'm keeping it brief. So thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Stephens. Next is Frida Stephens.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Byers. I'm here to voice my opinion to support you on the no confidence vote for the Yakima County Homeless Coalition. Apparently, their approach hasn't worked, and we need better ideas to solve this problem. And I support you in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stephens. Next is Joe Daniels.
He's outside. There he comes.
My name is Joe Daniels, and I'm a member. I stay in Yakima, Washington. I'd like to read a couple definitions to you. Patriot, having or expression devotion to and vigorous support for one's country. Synonyms, a loyness, a loyal, a nationalist, a nationalistic, a country-loving, flag-waving, spread eagle, chauvinist. And the next word is communist, a person who supports or believes in the principles of communism. Same thing, I was very left-wing, but I was never a communist. Seminums, synonyms, a markness, socialist, leftist, collectivist, radical, socialist, anti-capitalist, Marxist, Leninist, Leninist, Soviet, Voselvich, Voselvich, neo-Marxist, Troxus, Gaius, commie, Vosik, red, left-hand trot. Now, communism, a political theory derived from Karl Marx, advocating class war and leading to a society in which all property is publicly owned and each person works and is paid according to their abilities and needs. Synonym, collectiveness, ownership, socialism, radical, socialist, Sovietism, Marxism, Marxists, neo-Marxists, Leninism. Master, my next word, a man who has people working for him, especially servants or slaves. He has accepted his master's wishes. Synonyms, lord and master, ruler, sovereignty, monarch, league, league lord, serene, overseer, superintendent, director, manager, controller, leader, governor, command, patron, captain, head, headman, boss, principal, employer, farmer, foreman, chief, top dog, huncho, head huncho, big chief, big daddy, kaffer. Those are the definitions I just want to say to the council because right now my people are slaves under this rule of leadership. And I hope we can do something about it in the near future because Lord and Savior is back, the King is back.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Next is Jenny Reed.
Good evening, Councilwoman Patricia Byers, Mayor. I live in the county. My name is Jenny Reed, and I'm just here to support the resolution and hope that you pass this tonight because whatever we've been doing with homeless doesn't appear to be helping. As I look around us, I just see it more and more developing every time I drive down the freeway, on the side of the freeway, downtown, and even out in West Valley. It's moving further out, further out. We have them standing outside of Walmart all the time. We have them at 72nd, and we just need to make some changes and see if we can come up with a better way for them as well as for us. I hate to see it for them too, for the homeless. So I just am suggesting that we shut it down and start over with something new that might work better.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Next is Christina Bassford.
Good evening. My name's Christina Bassford. I work downtown Yakima. I've worked there. I've worked downtown for 10 years. I work for the Bridemire. It's the old Talcott Building, anybody who knows that. I came down here today because I've had a problem for the last three years, pretty bad, hot and heavy. But the last few weeks, I've been accosted by people who have jumped out of my garbage can. I have people living in the back of the building. I can't get YPD down there to remove them because YPD doesn't have anything they can do with these people. I don't, I didn't know that this was what was going on here tonight, but I can tell you as someone who is in Yakima every day, walking the streets. I have 13 residents that live upstairs. They're different people that come into town, people that work for all over, all the beer places everywhere. And I have a lot of professionals that come in, a lot of the nursing staff, a lot of these people are afraid to go outside to throw their garbage away. They don't know what to do. I don't know what we're doing altogether. I live in Moxie. We don't have this problem in Moxie. But I know, working down here, walking to the state company for lunch, going to Ace Hardware, and seeing that YPD can't do anything about people spray painting on the side of the building, and knowing that I'm there and I have to tell them, hey, you guys have to leave. Is that my job now? Because we can't handle it with Yakima? We're not handling it correctly? What happened to our downtown is sad. It's horrible. When I was a kid, we could go downtown. Would you walk down the streets? Would you? At 6 o'clock? I want to know. Would you, with your handbag, walk down by the state company? Would you? The answer is no. My girlfriend, her son, her husband went to Olive Garden. A homeless person punched him in the face. Their son. What are we doing? I don't know. That doesn't happen in Moxie. I'm just saying. Apples to oranges, not comparing. It also doesn't happen in Natchez and/or Seala. So what is Yakima not doing? I've lived in Yakima my whole life.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bassford, your time is up.
Okay. Hopefully, we can resolve something though, because this is really sad. Thank you.
Is there a Mike Schreiner here?
On Zoom, I believe.
Mike Schreiner?
Mayor Byers, I believe.
Mayor Byers.
Yes.
Yes, he is on Zoom.
All right, we have two more in person, and then I will call for him again.
Three more.
Three more. Is that all right, Mr. Beeler?
Yes, that will work.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have. I just have the name Corsi here, but I'm thinking it's Tony Corsi.
Tony Corsi, where I lay my head is where I stay. So in your photos of the week or month, City of Yakima 2023, what is the name of the lady in the photo? Wait, don't answer that because it's not too beneficial from my perspective, although I have Alice Stevens' signature as well as her power of attorney on the water right claim. Thank you, Mrs. Baker, for taking that little short meeting. We got absolutely nothing accomplished besides you learned a little bit more. You didn't know that we went upstairs after we left your office and talked to the planning guy, Trevor. I was pleasantly surprised knowing that the judge had made the statement that I am the one that gets to sell the next piece of property that we have. We being me and my wife. She's still my wife after all these years, and I've been trying to help her with this wish she had. Her wish was be separated for a while. I don't believe in separation. You want a separation, get a divorce. So now we're on year six. How in the heck, if a judge says, don't, I get to sell the next piece of property because she did the 34th property, you guys have a mat sold that property. I haven't signed one document on any of the papers that the properties have been sold. The water right claim, there's a letter that was turned in. This is a public request for the letter that my wife gave you, that Alice Stevens gave you in front of the council, and we also gave one to the city of Seala. So I will go back over there and ask them. They have the speed like you guys. Nothing gets done besides thievery. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Corsi. Next is Kenton Gartral.
Kenton Gartral, City of Yakima, resident and voter. I support this resolution going forward. I believe it is a very positive step to actually creating a metric of success and possibly making a program that actually can have success. Most of the program is actually a six-year failure of a five-year program. To give some of the experience is that I was down here getting coffee about a month ago at Mc Daddy's Coffee. While I was getting coffee, Kraft had got graffitied in the amount of 30 minutes that I was getting my coffee. My truck was vandalized by the beating of the hood, and YPD took a nice report. And then the headlamp got beat up, all because the jail let somebody out and then ended up getting some few warrants a week later and was a vagabond out here on the streets, just being a homeless person. Other experiences is that a homeless person that was released by one of the providers that have been here for over 50 years that has failed this community and been parasiting off this community and I would call a neighborhood terrorist. You could see a lot of Natchez housing being taken up by this program, has no metrics of success, has continually been a failure since 1974, releases individuals into our community. One of these individuals ended up kidnapping my kid two or three years ago. So I'm okay with helping homeless. I was at the Homeless Coalition yesterday at their resource center. I think there are avenues forward. However, I think the City of Yakima is doing a positive step here in being that the providers that currently aren't there are not interested in resolving homelessness. They are interested in our tax dollars. They are interested in federal tax dollars and state tax dollars to pay their six-figure salaries and actually not resolve the problem, but actually compound the problem. And I think the City of Yakima is doing a good step, and I hope to see them actually build a relationship with hopefully other cities to hopefully pursue a better project than currently exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gartral. Next is Gina Hernandez.
Evening, Council, Gina Hernandez, City of Yakima. I just want to thank you for your patience and your willingness to do the job that you're doing and to listen to all that we're listening to. I do think we have issues with some of the way things are being handled with our homelessness. We have a nationwide problem of lack of housing and homelessness throughout. I don't know that Yakima is having it any more severely than any place else. I don't know about Moxie, but if the young lady who spoke earlier wants to walk down the streets of Yakima, I will walk with you, honey, anytime, anywhere you name it. I will go. I don't have a problem with that at all. I'll show you downtown and how it looks. It's actually.
This is the time, this is the time to address the council. This is the time to address the council.
Understood. Thank you. Sorry. I'll be happy to walk with you downtown Yakima. Yakima has fine police officers who do what they can. I do think we have some major legislative issues that have hogtied us. I think we have some fiscal problems and situations that are not within the scope of this council, and I'm sorry that you have to continue to hear folks bring to you things that are not within your scope to deal with on a regular basis. But I do appreciate what you're doing, what's being done here, what's being done in downtown Yakima in general. It is a big problem. I am part of the Yakima Homeless Coalition, have been for over the five years, the last five-year plan. If you have a non-confidence vote against the Homeless Coalition, I completely understand that. I'm not going to argue with that. Obviously, there's things we could do better, we could do differently. But when we cannot pull them out of the streets, when we cannot have places to put them, we're not going to outlaw life, nor should we. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Beeler, if Mr. Schreiner is there, we'd love to hear from him.
Mayor Byers, Mr. Schreiner has been promoted to a panelist, and he should be able to turn on his microphone and camera at this time.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't think I can get my camera to work. Thank you for allowing me to address the council. We are the owners of the Bryn Mawr Building, also known as the Talcott Building, 312 West Yakima Avenue. It was a pleasure to see Chris there tonight. We appreciate what the city's been trying to do, but as I have been watching this telecast, I realized that this is an issue that's apparently been ongoing. I'm kind of in agreeance that if there is a homeless commission and it's been operating for five years, they've done little to nothing to make an impact on what's happening. I would say on a daily basis practically, Chris has to deal with things such as camping in our alleyway, dumpster diving, blocking the alleyway, urinating and defecating in public. And I think the last episode that we had, we were, my 78-year-old mother called the police department, who told her that she had to be there to sign a complaint in order for them to get somebody from blocking their car and camping in the alleyway. So if the council is going to be moving forward with a no confidence vote, as it would appear, I want to let you know that we completely support that.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you.
Mr. Beeler, is there anyone else online who wishes to address the council?
No, Mayor Byers, there is none.
Thank you. We have no further comment. I will close this section, and we'll move into open discussion for the good of the order. We are going to start with item 5A, which is Councilman Reedie Berg, who's talking with the nominee committee.
All right. So we had a meeting on Friday, excuse me, Monday, February 24th, to review some applications coupled for the Henry Beauchamp Community Center. We interviewed Mr. Emeka Udense and Mr. Carlos Fernandez. And after conducting those interviews and reviewing, Mr. Councilman Herrera moved, and I seconded to recommend Mr. Udense to the Henry Beauchamp Community Center Advisory Board. That was a unanimous decision. Following that, we reviewed applications. We didn't interview for the Hotel and Motel Commission to the tourism promotion area and made the following recommendations. I moved, and Mr. Herrera seconded to recommend Audrey Rutherford and Erica Keller to the Hotel and Motel Commission, and that was also a unanimous decision.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council?
I'm impressed you got his name right.
I've been practicing. Are you here? Is that? Yeah, there was, so.
Welcome.
Welcome and congratulations.
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I move to adopt the council nominated committee recommendations.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilman DeCio and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to accept the recommendations of the nominating committee. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then now congratulations because it's formal. Next on the agenda is item 5B, which is a presentation by YVCOG for their 2024 annual report. Presenting is Chris Wegenhagen, the YVCOG Executive Director.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to come and present the work that was accomplished in 2024. See if I can get this right. There we go. So YVCOG was formed in 1966. It was the elected officials in the Yakima Valley that came together and said they needed a platform, a forum, to be able to discuss issues and programs, things that affected all of their jurisdictions, allowing them to keep authority over it and represent their city, which is how YVCOG actually came to be. We work on different issues that cross jurisdictional boundaries, but we work for you. We don't work for the public. What our elected officials have learned is that it is very cost-efficient to be able to use one organization instead of having that specific program administered in each of the individual agencies. We became the state transportation planning organization in the 70s, and then we became the federal state or the federal delegated transportation planning agency in the 80s. Jim Restushi, who is our chair, he has been our chair for multiple years now. He used to be on council in Sunnyside, and he is now a transportation commissioner with the Washington State Transportation Board. This last year, Senator King received our outstanding service award. You can see his dedication and support to the Yakima area. He truly cares about this community and the people that live here. He was a great support with our transportation infrastructure and looking at all of the different options and projects in our valley. He also was a great support of the crime lab, knowing that local control is the best type of control. The general membership consists of one elected person from each municipality. They are what we call our general membership. They vote on our budget, they vote on programs, and they are in control of YVCOG and the programs. They in turn then vote for seven of those people to handle the day-to-day, and they are called our executive committee, and Mayor Byers serves on that, and you nominated her to be your vote, your voice for the city of Yakima. And then our transportation board includes that executive committee along with a representative from Washtot, a representative who offers public transit, and then an economic development agency. These are the people who served you in 2024, and I truly believe that these are some of the most outstanding people in our community. They have a heart for what you do. And again, all we are is a support for you. They have a heart for what you do, and again, all we are is a support for you. The local.
I don't know who this Vicki lady is.
Yeah, I know, I know, you guys got a good one. The local crime lab had its first full year of operation. We have had successes in assisting officers with forensic evidence, cell phone extractions, DNA testing, and investigative intelligence. The turnaround time for NiBEN, and I'd love to share this, so NiBEN is the little machine that looks at the fingerprint of a bullet casing. When that is brought into us from start to finish, it's about three and a half days. What that means is that it's put into a machine that goes out to the federal database, comes back, our staff is able to examine it and find correlations of other types of crimes used with that specific gun, and then a report is disseminated to the law enforcement, to those officers. Three and a half days is all it's taking them, which is giving the officers a huge advantage when they are doing the investigative work that they do, because they can go out then and talk with witnesses or people who are still, it's fresh in their mind, rather than six, 12 months later. We were able to start up the three-years process, working with the chiefs and the sheriff. We'll be working on uniformed coding in Spillman, and that is across the board throughout our entire valley. So if any of you serve on the Yakor Board, you understand the importance of having good data. And right now, what has happened is each agency is entering things the same way, but when we try to pull for the whole region and share that with the state, because things are entered differently, we don't have good data. And so we're just working with all of the law enforcement agencies to come up with what is going to be that uniform coding that we all use. We did receive a grant for three projects, analysis and data collection of firearms, support investigations related to fentanyl, and support for the Rapid DNA Work Group. Our local crime lab here is facilitating a work group with other agencies across the state with the Rapid DNA. The other agencies are Watcom County Sheriff's Office, Spokane County Sheriff's Office, King County Sheriff's Office, Bellingham PD, Vancouver PD, Snohomish County Sheriff's Office, Benton County Sheriff's Office, the Washington State Patrol Crime Lab, and us. So we are in the middle of writing policies and procedures to be able to move forward with the Rapid DNA, and it's something that we are working with FBI on also. And you can see the stats of what we have done in 2023 and what we have done in 2024. Our gun crime here in the valley is something we are working very hard to get under control, to get those specific guns off the street. We have only a few people who are using them, but they're using them a lot. We've also received a grant from GISA Credit Union and the Tribe, and those were used to purchase supplies for the crime lab. Last year, we also performed strategic facilitations for some of our cities, so board retreats in Grandview, in Union Gap, and in Silla, and we were able to help them actually focus on the specific priorities that they have concerns with in their cities. We started up podcasts this last year with the multimedia aspect, so we are on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, and oh, I'm going to get in trouble for machine for not remembering this other one. LinkedIn. LinkedIn, thank you. So what our focus truly is here is to assist with getting out information to the public. We want them to understand what it is you are focusing on, what your priorities are, being as transparent as we can, helping to explain why things take as long as they take in government. It's very hard for people who are in the business world to be able to understand that. So you can scan those QR codes and go in and look at some of the different podcasts that we have done. Transportation this last year has been very busy. With the involvement of your staff and other staff, we have adopted the valley's required, I want to make sure that you understand, this is a required 20-year transportation plan. I don't know who actually can project out 20 years, but your staff did the best that they could, along with the other public service people. We also sponsored the State Route 12 Natchez Corridor Study, looking at the safety, the 2019 intercity bus plan, and participated in the seven-state Northwest Regional Work Group evaluating the restoration of the passenger rail coming back through the valley. We also have been working with the nation with a Heritage Connectivity Trail, and we participated in the 2024 Greenway Plan also. Transportation awarded 7.75 million in federal funding in 2024, and our members obligated 2 million of that. So what that means is a city can be awarded money but not ready to use it maybe for nine months, and so it just sits there and it waits for you to obligate it, because once you hit that start button of obligation, you've got 10 years to finish that part of your project. If you don't get that part of your project done, then you have to pay back those federal funds. And so we want to make sure that you are shovel-ready to go before it is obligated. And let's see, let's move on. So this is our website that I was talking about, so we completely revamped it, hoping to make it a little bit easier. We went in and looked at your website. We just, you know, went in and said what's easy to actually maneuver through to find the information that you're wanting to find. So we were able to break it down into the different programs so that people can just go in and look at what they're interested in. The land use planning was also very busy, we were focused on assisting our members with required plans from the state. It's always interesting when they require something and everybody is doing the shuffle of trying to figure out how to get this done, and what does this mean for us moving forward? So we're working through the climate element right now. That is going to be a section that is going to have to be in your guys' comprehensive plan, and really what it is, is looking at how you can be resilient if, for instance, there were a flood, or there were fires, smoke, those types of things. Are you ready to go in that type of an emergency? And that's really how we're putting together the climate element for the cities that we're working with. We also did a lot of technical assistance, where we help our members share in the cost of expert staff. So there are some of our agencies that maybe need somebody for 500 hours a year, and that's it. So they can tap into us, and then they only pay for the hours that that person actually works in their programs. We, this last year, did assist Yakima with educating the, your guys' , I'm sorry, it's.
Planning Commission.
Thank you. The Planning Commission that reports back to you. So they are just an advisory body, you still maintain all of your authority there. And so we were helping them to understand how that works with them looking at things and then coming back and making recommendations to the governing body. We looked at boundary lines adjustments for some of our cities, subdivision, ordinance updates, permitting, CPAs, NEPs, and again, we work for the city, not for the developer. And so when we create a staff report, it truly is for the council, it is not for a The GIS, you guys have an amazing GIS system here, so we also do provide that for some of our cities who do not have that type of a service, and again, they just pay for the hours that it took to create a map for them. We have had a contract with the state for community law enforcement partnerships for the last three years. We've got, it will be up the end of June this year. What this grant really has done has allowed us to go out and work with cities, work with businesses, work with people to set up block watches, to attend national night outs, to be able to really communicate and share with the public how to communicate with law enforcement. And that is so important, because as we heard, people would really like a law enforcement to do step one, two, and three, and that may not be possible for them. So our goal truly has been to just go out and educate and work with the community of what outreach and engagement looks like. We offer housing services for emergency repairs. So what this does is we look at homes, well, people will put in an application, and we look at the emergency repair that they have. If they are over 55 or disabled, or they have a child that's disabled living in the home, and they are the homeowner, living there 12 months out of the year, we can go in and assist them with specific types of emergency repairs. It can be things like their heating system went out, or their power box needs to be upgraded because they cannot plug in medical equipment that maybe they need to use, wheelchair ramps, mold, mildew, things like that. So we go in and work with them to do that one repair that allows them to stay in their This is your staff again at YVCOG, and we participate in the wellness program, just like you guys do, and so when there's different types of opportunities where we can all get together, we enjoy doing that. Future priorities in 2025, workforce development. So what we have heard from our members is that it's very difficult to find people who are qualified in government-type positions. So we are looking for ways to bring some of those, maybe graduates, out of college, and give them some experience and training, and then be able to feed our member cities with that expert staff. So it can be planning, very difficult to get planners, it can be government accounting that is completely different from every other type of accounting you can imagine. And anything else that you guys communicate with us that you're having a hard time filling those types of roles? Transportation is going to be awarding 5 million for air quality projects, so those are things like street sweepers, things like that fall into that category. Planning will continue to focus on the climate element, the periodic updates, and then specific planning needs in our cities. We will continue to work with law enforcement and those partnerships with block watches, especially those business block watches. That has been the new thing, is that businesses are getting together to do block watches. Housing, we will continue to do the home repairs. We have also received a new grant for Tubman, which is for down payment assistance for people who also fall into some of those categories to be able to purchase their own home. We have taken on the Target Zero Program, which has to do with fatalities on the freeway, people who are drinking and driving, or under the influence, or using a cell phone, any of those types of things. So our objective is to go out and educate people on why they should not be using those things. And then the crime lab is focusing on completing our startup and the new facility in the Zilla area. The last page shows a breakdown of our revenue and expenditures, and also for the annual assessments that each of our members paid in. Thank you. Do you have any questions of me about the services at YVCOG?
Any questions, my council?
No.
I have one.
Yes.
I know that under workforce development, you have a new classes coming up, can you mention that to us, please?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, Mayor.
A new class that you have coming up in terms of government training?
Oh, yeah, so we are having a Plane Talk Conference Workshop that's coming up, it's put on by Jordan Peabody, and it really is an opportunity for staff in the cities to be able to communicate in email and/or their brochures in a way that the public would understand. Government is so good with our acronyms, and we have our own terminology, and we need to be able to communicate with the public so that they understand what it is that we're actually doing. That is March 11th. It is an all-day event, and it is going to be hosted in Union Gap at their community
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Ms. Wegenhagen.
Thank you.
Do we have something?
Oh, I just got to say, you know, when you come to GIS systems, the county has a really good system, but now every time I get on the computer, the state system, which charges a dollar every time you get on it, overrides it. I don't know if you guys have looked at that at all, but that's something that just kind of bugs me. When the county provides something for free, it kind of irritates me that the state comes back and charges us for exactly the same information.
Wow, I did not know that, and yeah, no cost.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item six, which is council reports. We're going to hear first from Assistant Mayor Matt Brown on the resolution expressing city council's concern regarding performance and accountability of the Yakima Homeless Coalition.
Yeah, so before you guys is the resolution, I mean, it pretty much speaks for itself, but, you know, first I want to say thank you to Commissioner Curtis for coming tonight, and also for a lot of community members reaching out. Obviously, this has been a, it's very frustrating from a community standpoint of what happens. And to be honest with you, as someone that has had to deal with this and different worlds that I've been in, it's frustrating to see so many people on the street, because when it gets cold or it gets hot, I think I've mentioned this, is people start dying in these things, and if we don't have a plan and then it's not getting executed well, then it's, what are we doing? So the other aspect of this too, though, that I want to mention is this is not to try to necessarily remove funding or gut systems or any of those type of things. It's more so to do with the fact that I think cities need to have more of a stake in these decisions, and I think they need to be at the table. And this really resolution, in my opinion, puts us at the table with the commissioners, and I'm hoping that if we pass this tonight, that the commissioners would take us up on that and actually meet with us, maybe as a combined effort, to kind of work through some of these things. I don't think they're hard solutions on this resolution to act. I don't think they're hard solutions on this resolution to actually meet those aspects, but I do think it sends a message and tries to really lead our community to asking hard questions, but also getting better solutions at the table. I don't want to look five years from now and go, man, I sure wish I would have said something then, when if this, we didn't get anywhere closer. And because, again, there's so many people that are experiencing this, that are, you know, dying on our streets, and we can't, we can't just keep doing the same thing and expect different results. So that's, that's why I wrote the resolution and why I, you know, would move to adopt the resolution.
I'd like to say something. I agree completely.
Wait, there's a motion on the table?
Oh.
There's a motion. We need a second to discuss.
Oh, okay.
I will second the motion.
Now can I say something?
Now you can talk.
Okay. I just want to say that I agree with everything Commissioner Curtis said. I think that there is a lot of things that we need to fix. It's really unfortunate that people don't feel safe going anywhere in this. I mean, I feel safe, but a lot of people don't. And I think there is a need for reform, definitely. I would personally like to see more permanent support of housing be built, because I think that's the answer. We can't just keep putting people in shelters and, you know, hope for the best. I think that there needs to be programs and housing. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't necessarily agree that we need to do a no-confidence vote, but I think that we need to do some changes. And I like the idea of doing audits and reform, but I don't want to, the people who are working are working hard, and they're, and they, they know what they're doing. They've been in the trenches, and I don't want to dismiss that at all, because I think they're, they're great people, and they do a lot of work, and their heart's in the right place. It's a very complicated problem, and it's not going to get any easier going forward unless we do make some reforms.
Any other comments by council? Mr. Berg?
I just have a couple of questions. I don't know if you can help me, but Mr. Gartral mentioned funding to providers tonight. How are like the providers, like Neighborhood Health and Union Gospel Mission, how are they, I guess, compensated by the city? Is it like a lump sum upfront, or?
So none of the money goes directly from the city to the providers. The money flows through the county to the providers, both the filing fee money, the consolidated housing grant money, and the other state money, and there's some federal money. But all of it goes through the county process, which Commissioner Curtis provided some information about the process. It's in the charter. And so there's a committee that looks at applications. They do an RFP. Some people, I think, sitting around this horse, who have served on that committee in the past. And then the county commissioners have the ultimate say under state statute where that money is distributed, and then the county distributes the money directly to the providers or the RFP, the proposals that get funded. And they have a contract with all of those entities directly with the county. So the city doesn't really have anything to do with the funding.
Okay. And then are any of the providers on that committee making decisions?
So the chart, so making decisions about the funding?
Yeah.
So, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the charter says that you cannot have a conflict of interest if you sit on that committee. So there should be no one on that committee who's making decisions where they have put in for the RFP.
Thank you.
However, there are providers that sit on the executive board?
Yes. They would just have to recuse themselves from, right, from, from voting on a specific thing that would benefit, or how is that done?
I don't know, because I, the city doesn't facilitate the executive committee, so that wouldn't be a question that I could answer.
I think the other-
You have the person who runs that program. If we wanted to have her answer that question, she could.
It's up to the council.
Yeah, absolutely.
What question do you have?
Thank you, council members. All good questions. I'll turn it over to Esther to dive into some details.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, these are great questions. So Councilmember Berg, I'll address your first one about reimbursements or lump sums. The county has contracts, as Sarah Watkins said, with all the providers that the Board of County Commissioners awards grants to. We don't have any decisions about funding made at the coalition level. Whether or not there's conflicts of interest, that's not pertinent. All of the funding decisions are made by the board. The coalition provides advisement to the Board of County Commissioners. Whenever we have an RFP, we do a scoring committee, and we pull from that coalition membership and ask them to participate in scoring. I know Mayor Byers has participated in the past. She knows it's a big lift. And the scoring is where we have that conflict of interest policy. You can't participate in providing scoring if you have any conflict of interest whatsoever. It could be employment, volunteering, whatever it is. We really ask people to apply, and we vet them to ensure that we're not pulling even information that could influence the commissioner's decision-making from people who might have a tie to it. And then once those awards are granted, we have a contract, and it's all on a reimbursement basis. And every single dollar that we reimburse, we check and make sure that it's an allowable cost, it's in alignment with the allowability of the funding and of the contract that was awarded to them within the scope of whatever the commissioners had intended them to use the funding for. So when you have, you know, a hundred thousand dollar contract, whatever it may be, we would never provide a lump sum. We don't provide cash upfront. You have to incur the cost, and then you have to provide us the documentation, all the finances that show what the cost was and how it's relevant to the program that you were funded for. We have to approve that cost, and only then will we reimburse it. And we have the same agreement with the state for all the state funding, which is the majority of the funding that the programs we fund utilize. And so we have a regular check system from the state as well, that they're reviewing all of the reimbursements we issue to them, and they're also confirming that they're allowable costs. And then, of course, we get audited by the state every single year as a part of the regular state auditing process. And we've also been audited for, I believe, seven out of the 10 federal programs run by Yakima County in the last five years since the department was developed.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So the RFP process that you mentioned and had a scoring committee, Commissioner, that those scores were thrown out and were not taken into consideration. You guys, as commissioners, ultimately decided what you were going to fund. So that's one. And then the second aspect of that is I'm trying to understand from a, from just a time commitment to be on this executive board, is what is our role then if we are not executing a five-year plan, and we are not doing an RFP schedule? If we are not doing any of those things, then the plan is not working, is basically the, is what I've been trying to say.
Absolutely. And in my email to council, I highlighted just that fact, that I recognize that, and it didn't take me a year and a half to recognize that we needed some structural changes, one of them being that the executive committee needs to actually have purpose, and it needs to have a directive, right? So that's why we, as county commissioners, we modified our charter to explicitly state six objectives of what your executive committee does, one of them being is an annual review and report out to the community, to the cities, and to your commissioners on what is the outcomes of the program. When, when it comes to the competitive scoring committee, one of my biggest pet peeves on the competitive scoring committee is we spend all this time and energy going out to, into the community, trying to find nine volunteers, nine volunteers who have never engaged in the coalition process to have a, to rate all of the applications. And so one of the structural changes you see is that moving forward, those folks that are going to do the competitive scoring have to be members of your executive committee, with the thought being that we want folks who are meeting every single month, who are having to take, for lack of a better term, get black eyes from the community because of the responses we're seeing, and that was the strategy for why those changes are. Yes, there is representation on the executive committee from providers, but those providers were elected by the coalition at large. And again, as I shared in my email to council, I am not opposed to additional changes. We need to do whatever it takes to get us to a point where, when we adopt this next five-year plan, it's a five-year plan that our entire community, including the cities, can stand behind. Thank you.
I'd like to share, because I was on the committee, and Commissioner, you know, I've been to speak to the county commissioners about the process. And I'll just be honest, it's a horrendous process. It's a horrendous process for the providers to fill out pages and pages and pages and pages, and it is a very difficult process for those evaluating that. And, you know, you said had no experience. I've not been on the coalition, but I've been on council since, you know, 2020. I was involved initially with a five-year plan in terms of talking about and evaluating some things. So I'm familiar. And with my familiarity with the issues, I feel like I scored things very fairly. And when the, the people who get the highest score don't get the funding, they have their funding cut, to me, that's a concern. It's like there's a disconnect somewhere in the system. And I just think in fairness to the people that take the time to fill out the RFPs and go through that process, and people go through the process of scoring that, you know, it needs to be more transparent in terms of what's happening there. The other thing I want to say is that, you know, we don't give the money directly to the providers, but it is the city's money. We make a decision to give it to the county to use for services, but we don't, we don't have to do that. So in one way, we are accountable to our own taxpayers in terms of what we're doing with that money. And that's why these questions come up, because if we don't see that the system is being successful in using that money, then we're looking for definite change. And that's the purpose of the resolution. It's not to close anything down. It is, let's resolve the issues that, that everybody is talking about have not been successful. And I can't speak on behalf of all the mayors, but the last couple of mayor's meetings, I've had a lot of mayors asking me about our resolution and the process, and they're watching, they're looking, because many of them have the same concerns that we do as a city in terms of the confidence of the homeless coalition and the last five-year plan to accomplish anything.
May I respond, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I truly appreciate your comments, because it is a reflection of what our community is feeling. So I'm not here to defend you, defend the coalition that it's perfect. By any means, I'm telling you, I've made some reforms, but we need to make more reforms. And we need to, this is the perfect opportunity for our community to do that, and the cities to stand alongside us so that you know that your voice is heard loud and clear, and that you're, you're essentially driving, you're steering the program to where it needs to be. And I also want to say, I apologize for my comment. The nine folks that volunteered, again, countless, countless hours, but the way the charter was written, we were really trying to find someone who had no conflict of interest. And for me, at the end of the day, you want people grading programs who are heavily, heavily, heavily involved in the issues of homelessness and how it's affecting our, our community. And that's why I do think it needs to include more electeds, and the executive committee is the perfect entity to be the scoring committee. Your commissioners absolutely valued the input and the work. I will be honest with you, when allocating the dollars, it wasn't done in the straight, most straightforward way that I would have liked it. At the end of the day, all the programs got funded 100% of what they asked. We did have additional commerce dollars that came in, and so those dollars aren't, were inflation dollars. We're not going to see those moving forward. And so moving forward, it's going to be adamant that when we score applications of programs, that we recognize that we can't fund everything, and that's why this reform I'm not against. Thank you.
I also want to come, I'm sorry, go ahead. You go first.
Oh, I guess for me too, is as, as one of the reasons why writing this resolution, that I was so passionate about this, is when I look at the current, the new changes on the executive board, you sent an email earlier this week, or maybe it was late last week, that talked about how some of the changes, there are some city members. However, when it comes to city electeds, there is not. So even the COG members that represent all of the lower valley cities aren't an elected person that is representing those cities. I have nothing against COG, right? Thank you for, for, you know, being there to represent those smaller cities. But I've talked to some of those smaller cities, and they are, they're like, we're, we don't even get to come and talk to these things. And so as the crux of the 2163 money comes from the cities processing, you know, those filing fees and different things, I'm like, I, in my opinion, I think there needs to be all electeds from that, all of those cities, there needs to be an elected from there. And I understand your thoughts on the Health and Human Services piece and not, you know, removing that entire. My thought behind putting this position on here was dedicating one entity or one person to really focus on this process. Esther, you have a lot of other things to do other than just managing this one thing. And, and I'm going to be honest, like, this five-year plan is a hefty lift. This last one was, this one will be, and we can't, we, we don't have an opportunity to keep hoping we get this right. We have to get this right. People are dying on our streets. There's no more just hoping that we're going to do this correctly. Like, we have to execute. And that's why I think there needs to be one person that is, every single day, they wake up, they do this job. That's it. So.
Let me also say that, I'm going to collect my thought. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll take a minute. When you talk about homeless people, I think about two-thirds of Yakima is, they own their own homes.
Turn your mic off.
The other one-third, you could technically say are homeless. They're renting, or they don't have a place to stay. And one of the things that I've noticed is going on, we have a lot of programs that you oversee that help a lot of people that would be homeless otherwise, but they're not out on the streets because they're getting the advantage of these programs. And, you know, so you can see how that works out. The thing that really bugs me now is that you get this core group that's out on the streets that are really not rentable. I've, I've worked with them, I've been around them. They're drug addicts, they've, the pimping, there are all kinds of criminal activities going on among this group. And, and the thing that I've noticed over the last five years, they've learned that they can game the system. They'll go to a nonprofit, give me help, and then they stiff the landlord, and when they get evicted, they go back to the nonprofit, help me. And that's a group that I really want to focus on. The people that are on the streets are not safe being there, and it's not safe for the public. The ones that go to the mission, the ones that are at Camp Hope, they're working, they're trying to get to a better place, and, and these programs help them do that, and that's a wonderful thing. But at the end of the day, you got maybe one-tenth of the homeless people that are out on the streets, and we can't let them stay there. They are not interested in obeying the laws, they aren't interested in respecting other people's property, and they cost the city a ton of money. What we spend through you is peanuts compared to what they cost in ruining the tourism, ruining the, the quality of life for the city, and the damage that they cause every night. I was cleaning up an apartment this morning that, you know, the, the renter passed away, and I called the tenant, and I said, you need to get your stuff out of there immediately and get the car out immediately, because it's not safe there. People will break in. And sure enough, the door smashed, the smithereens and everything got taken out that's of value. That's an expense that landlords have to put up with all the time, because homeless people do not respect private property. And so this resolution, as we go forward, I think we really need to focus that, yeah, we're helping 80% of the homeless people, but that 200 or 300 people that are out here on the streets that have absolutely no interest in obeying the law or respecting the law, and a lot of times, they don't even want a place to live. They just want to party. They want to get their drugs. I know what it's like to go into a convenience store and get a drink and have a homeless person come in and try to take it. You know, and I know what it's like to call 911, there's a person dying in front of my property, and come and get him. You know, that's insane. That shouldn't happen in a civilized society. And so that's the area that we really need to focus on.
Thank you. So I had two thoughts going in, didn't want to mix them, so now I'm ready to share. One is that Deputy Mayor Brown has talked about, and rightfully, that we have a very vulnerable population. You know, those who are unhoused or experiencing homelessness in our community, and they are very, they're vulnerable to weather, they're vulnerable to crimes against them, they're vulnerable to illness, all kinds of things. And yes, we need to be concerned about that. But the, the other thing is that we have people in our community, we have businesses, we have residents, we have parents that watch their children be accosted in front of a restaurant. So we have to look at both sides of, of the equation. It's not just about how do we help them, it's how do we help our entire city? So it's going to take a lot of concentrated effort for that. The other thing is that you mentioned another five-year goal. I honestly don't think we can do five years. And you mentioned the other night, Commissioner, I appreciate this so much, let's start with a two-year goal and see how much change we can make in two years. Is that attainable? And what can we actually do? Measurable goals in two years, and then we'll know we're headed in the right direction or not. We can't wait another five years to get answers for either the homeless or residents in our community who are, who are suffering that and paying for that, so.
So can I just, because I agree with you completely, but I don't want to say anything.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with you completely, and I just want to- I agree with you completely, and I just want to say, for the five-year plan, the intention is not that after five years, we look back and go, what happened in the last five years? Do we do it? Every year, my team publishes an annual update, and we have a data committee that goes through and helps look at those annual updates. I think that with the new five-year plan process, we're looking to have a stronger five-year plan where those annual updates will feel more meaningful. To be totally honest, I agree with the, you know, with what Deputy Mayor Brown has said, that our current five-year plan, it's pretty lacking. The last process was, for developing the five-year plan, was in 2019, and that's when the program moved halfway through the year. And so when we came to the county and took over the process of developing the five-year plan, we had about four months before the plan had to be adopted, and we were kind of halfway through the process that had already been started. And that's not to say that there isn't elements of that plan that are really valuable, or goals that are really laudable, but I think that when it comes to building database measurable outcomes and data-informed goals, we didn't have the time and the resources needed to do that the right way. And this year, I'm really confident that we're off to a much better start. I mean, we started the meetings early on. Councilmember Brown, you were at our first one in January to kind of plan and set the foundation, but even prior to that, in November, December, my team was trying to get together and say, okay, what is that first step? What do we do? How do we get in lockstep with the state so we understand what the state expectations are? Having gone through the process twice now, this being the second time, I just want to provide assurance to the council that from the inside, the plan development process is looking a lot different, and we have a lot better resources in terms of data, because our team has worked for the last two years to clean out the infrastructure of that HMS database. I still, I agree with what the commissioner said and what's been said here, there's always more improvements to be made, but I just want to assure you that we're committed to making those improvements, and we appreciate being able to hear feedback from all of you, because we want to make those improvements together, and we want to make the improvements that work. It's not an issue of ego, or whose idea is the best, or whatever, like, we want the same outcomes you want, and we want to work with you on them.
So I will, go ahead.
Would we be able to get more frequent updates on what's going on with it?
Oh, yeah, I have offered many times, I'm happy to come anytime the city calls, I'm happy to give presentations, whatever you all need. And if there's a short form that you want me to follow of, like, here's the specific updates we want, let me know, I'm always open to coming and talking about it.
If I might just add, Councilmember DCO, I mean, yes, we needed to do more updating to the councils and the cities, but frankly, when you look at the past five-year plan, what are we going to update you on? Really, there was no measurable, attainable, data-driven solutions or anything. And so that is why I'm really excited, and I hopeful that at the end of this year, this community has something, that every year, we are having this type of conversation, because we need to have these types of conversations more often. Thank you.
So I was simply going to add that, I, you know, like I say, it's not the intention to dismiss anything or regret anything, the intention is to have a very positive direction forward, which will take all of us working together. However, I've gotten so much feedback from the community, members, residents, businesses, and everybody else that are expressing that same no confidence. And because of that, representing my constituents, I will vote to pass a resolution.
So.
It's just a way of saying, we hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, everyone working together is going to make this thing smoother, right? And we're going to be able to accomplish more. However, we, you know, the RFPs have been sent out for 25, 26, that money is going to be distributed based on what the commissioners came up with. And whatever, that being the case, however, we are still operating, those RFPs are still operating on the previous five-year plan. And so the measurables, in my mind, I think there's two, there's two things here, is what you're measuring, and then who's holding someone accountable to the measurements, right? Because right now, a measurement is great, you can tell me that door is going to open, and I can measure how far that door opens, right? But who is going to actually check my measurements on how far that door opened? Are you going to walk over there and do that? And then are you going to hold me accountable to that? No, right? And so, and that's why I say I have a hard time expressing confidence in this whole system right now, because I have not seen any of those measurables actually been accomplished or held accountable. When I first came on council, that was the first thing I actually asked you, and actually it was you, and then I ended up talking to you and Melissa about this, was, okay, so what happens if we don't hit these metrics? Well, there's not metrics built into the RFPs at the time. And I said, whoa, that's a problem. It is. And then you guys fixed that, and that was great, it took a little while, because we were already in that process. And then I go, okay, now we have a new RFP with metrics in it, but who holds that dollars accountable? Is it the commissioners? Is it the state? Is it the cities? Is it the police out front? Like, who's doing those things? Because, again, it's taxpayer money that we are throwing out there to try to solve a problem, and the community is done. Like, they're done paying these bills, they're done basically having all of this money spent, and nothing is getting anywhere closer to what they wanted to see, right? And so that's why I wrote the resolution, that's why, you know, I will obviously support my own resolution. But, but also, let's looking at it from a community standpoint, I think the challenge we have as electeds, and why I think cities need to be on there, is because electeds, especially cities, we do take all of the punches when it comes, when someone comes into our horseshoe and is upset, like tonight, with our business owners, I didn't even know who these folks were that came in tonight, right? They just happened to come on this evening to do this. But that happens week after week after week, and we take that and we go, what do we do? I mean, we've had how many study sessions talking about homeless stuff, even our own attorney's like, I don't know if there's any more things I can talk about this issue. Hundreds of hours. And so I'm like, we have to do something different going forward, there has to be accountability, that's why the resolution exists. And I'm, I hope all the other, the other two commissioners as well, I would love to have a joint meeting so we can discuss these things and actually fix it going forward. Before we adopt a new plan at the end of the year, because this is our opportunity, right? If we go through this now, and we don't make these changes now, we have another five-year plan, that the whole process might be different, but we still don't have who's holding the accountability piece? Who's championing this project? Do cities have a huge say when it comes to this money being spent? Right now, I don't see that. So anyways, I've said a lot.
I do want to ask something I'm excited about, if I can, because you were talking about data, but I also don't want to take too much time, just, is it okay? Okay. So one thing, just, we talk about the accountability piece, again, I agree with you here, I think one of the issues that we've had historically is that there hasn't been a lot of data, and because there's not a lot of data, there's not a lot of accountability. One thing that I just want to share about what my team has been working on, and we've been working on it with the deadline of the five-year plan process, so the next strategic session, which I know you're going to go to, I'm sure, we're going to have more of the data pieces that we can show in that process, and we have two data committee meetings, one coming up on March 10th, and I can't remember when the one in April is, but we're really pushing the process through our data committee this year, because we're committed to having this be a data-driven process, both in terms of the data that informs the conversations, and the metrics that we spit out after to monitor the five-year plan year over year. But one of the issues that we've had over the last few years around the public accountability for providers is that the data infrastructure that providers work in, our HMS system, which I'm sure you guys have heard about, the infrastructure was pretty neglected. So my team had to go in, work with the state, figure out how to clean out, there were projects that existed from nonprofits that weren't operational anymore, but data was getting stuck in them, because providers were putting stuff in in the wrong bucket. I won't bore you with all the details, but the infrastructure cleanup on the backend for that database took a tremendous amount of work. And then the other piece is making sure that the data that's put in is quality data that we can actually tell something from. So, I mean, five years ago, we could have started printing reports, but the reports wouldn't have told us anything, because the quality of the data was so poor. So that's been a huge amount of what we've been doing, but I'll tell you for myself, I've held reimbursements and refused to reimburse on projects if their data isn't in, because we've been taking it really seriously, that you need to be submitting data. We do have some measurables, as you said, in our contracts now.
Esther, I'm sorry, but I'm going to bring the conversation back to the council.
Sure.
So thank you both very much for answering questions.
Yeah, and if there's more questions, just let us know, we'll be happy to come back.
I think one thing that came up that's worth mentioning, there is some issues that need to be handled on a statewide level. The police don't take care of the homeless problem the way that they should because of constraints of the law. And we also have court decisions that have been made against the state of Washington, where they are required to provide assistance for people who are under the influence of drugs or psychological problems, and they haven't dropped the ball completely. So as well as trying to hold you accountable, I want to make sure you guys reach out to the state and hold them accountable. They need to be making some changes in the law so that we can deal with this situation and keep as a civilized city.
That's a nice practice of the state government, making unfunded mandates, we're all aware of that, so, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May you allow me to say one last thing, Madam Mayor? Counsel, I just want to thank you for having this conversation. You will note that in none of my communication was I trying to persuade you to vote yea or nay on this. I think you have enough information before you, but I want you to know that you have a commissioner and commissioners that are committed, committed as this council is, for solutions, and I think we can get there. So thank you, guys.
I agree.
Any further discussion by council? Any thoughts you want to share?
We've got one last idea. My idea of a successful homeless program is when I drive down Natchez Avenue, or Yakima Avenue, or First Street, and I don't see homeless people wandering around on the streets.
I would say, excuse me, we don't allow applause in the state council meetings, thank you. I would agree with you, and I think that our residents and the people that are paying the tax money would be, that would be a good gauge for them as well, when they don't have issues with the homeless that are causing the kind of destructive behaviors that we're seeing, so.
Yeah, I mean, I hear you, Councilman Glenn, and I also think, just from a humanity perspective here, is that I am tired of people hurting on the streets, and us as government making excuses, or we can't solve this problem, or there's so many other things that, and in the meantime, people are dying, people are having these issues on the streets, and, you know, and I understand all of the, this is the data, this is that, here's the deal, there are data specialists in the world that can solve things in a matter of minutes now with AI and other things that are going on. It does not have to take the amount of time that it's taken, it also does not have to take the amount of time that it's taken to just try to solve this, or try something new. Try anything other than what we're trying, tweak it, mold it, change it, because, again, we, our business owners are frustrated, our community is frustrated, the people that are experiencing homeless are just as frustrated. I met a fellow during the homeless coalition, actually, it was kind of funny, it was before the homeless coalition, I met him over a year ago, and he told me something that was very interesting, was like, this is, this is a community problem that we have to solve, right? It's not, government, I don't think, can solve this problem. I think we have a part to play, and I'm asking for us, whatever our part is as government, is to go, let's make sure that's done well, and the community also can respond. And if it's not done well on our side, then what are we doing? So.
Any other comments by council? So we have a motion on the floor for a resolution. Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution expressing the city of Yakima's profound concerns regarding the performance and accountability of the Yakima County Homeless Coalition, and stating the city's intent to explore alternative strategies if meaningful reform is not implemented.
Thank you, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Buyers?
Yes.
DCO?
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
No.
Roy?
Yay.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, the vote is five to two, motion passes, and resolution is adopted. Thank you, council, for all the work on this this evening. We are going to move on. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items listed are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening? All right, then would you read the agenda, please?
Item A, approval of minutes from the February 18th, 2025 city council regular meeting. Item B, project completion and contract acceptance for the snow removal equipment, SRE, procurement, AIP number three, dash five, three, dash zero, zero, eight, nine, dash zero, five, four, dash two, zero, two, three. Item C, a resolution authorizing the write-off of certain uncollectible central accounts receivables for the city of Yakima. Item D, a resolution authorizing the write-off of certain uncollectible accounts receivable by the utility funds of the city of Yakima. Item E, a resolution authorizing the write-off of certain uncollectible parking citations and penalties for the city of Yakima. Item F, a resolution authorizing an agreement with KDA Architecture, Inc., for architectural design, space, and needs planning services. Item G, a resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of aeration system blower parts and repair services from Houghton USA Company for the city of Yakima wastewater division. Item H, a resolution authorizing a mutual aid agreement between the Department of the Army and the city of Yakima for emergency aid response services. And item I, an ordinance amending the city of Yakima municipal code, chapter 9.25, cruising control.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
A second.
So we have motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, a second by Councilman DCO, to approve the consent agenda as read. We'll need a roll call vote on that, please.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Buyers?
Yes. So the vote is seven, zero, the agenda is accepted, all resolutions are adopted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearings, we have none this evening, so we're going to move on. Item nine is department items, and we are going to have a discussion by, led by our city attorney, Sarah Watkins, on the proclamation policy.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. In front of you, based on your request, is the proclamation policy. The request at the last city council meeting was to change it so that three council members would have to sponsor a proclamation before it was brought forward in reviewing the proclamation policy as it stood, and Robert's Rules of Order with regards to how things can be put on your agenda. I provided you a memo with some follow-up questions that I think the council should discuss before further direction.
Thank you. Council? I think, Mr. Berg, did you bring this forward?
I did, yeah.
Would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. Before you, I gave you guys a packet here of kind of just being fully transparent with my thoughts on my proposal two weeks ago. And then later in that packet are some suggested amendments that I came up with after reading what was provided to us on Friday. So the reason, you can see on page one, I had five reasons for kind of bringing this forward, lighten our load on our staff. They spend a lot of time sorting through proclamation requests, so this change would let them focus on what we as a council decide matters most. Once we give them the green light with our four votes, then the staff can get to work on preparing the proclamations for us. Number two there, keeps proclamations in our hands, they're a way of speaking as a council, reflecting what we believe would be important for Yakima. By requiring four of us to agree on anything before it moves forward, we're not getting blindsided from the outside, which rolls right into number three, gives us a heads-up on the agenda. The change means nothing gets scheduled unless we have four votes first in a meeting, so we're all in agreement before we start that process, getting staff involved. And it also fits right into our rules, I believe, after reviewing the documentation that was sent to us, our rules and procedures for ordinances and resolutions, that's how we do it. So this tweak would make proclamations follow that same familiar path, motion, four votes, and a clear process. It's basically streamlining everything. And then we still welcome community involvement and ideas. So if a community member outside of our doors here had an idea, they would go to their representative, speak to them directly, and then that representative could propose the proclamation through a motion, and we follow the process. The amendments or changes on the back, I don't know if you guys have had time to read those, but basically, it's moving everything to kind of the same procedure we do for ordinances and resolutions, a motion, four votes, and then we move forward with what we need to. So I would welcome any discussion or questions.
Well, I feel like it's adding more bureaucracy, actually, because how will the person know who to get a sponsorship from? And will we have time to do that? And we already vote on those that are vetted already, they're vetted.
And we already vote on those that are vetted already, they're vetted before it comes to us, so I'm not sure where the sponsorship, what that, what that's.
Not a sponsorship.
Well, that's what it says.
No. When I was reading it, it's more so talking about how, so basically, if someone brought a proclamation to you, which they do, we get tons of emails for proclamations, they bring it to you, you came to that council meeting, you said, I want to put this on an agenda for a proclamation on XYZ, right? Just like anything else, resolution, ordinance, if you wanted to talk about something, you got to add it to an agenda. That's, that's basically our rules and procedures of doing anything we do. And so this would basically put it that way.
That would change what we're doing right now, then.
Well, here's, here's the other deal, is that, you know, our staff spends time, a lot of them don't always come with the whole proclamation, they come, we want a proclamation on XYZ date or time, and then our staff ends up having to draft said proclamation, and then if it comes to here, and we are like, we don't want to do this proclamation, then it's, we've spent time drafting a proclamation, I mean, as I'm reading it, I'm going, this makes sense to me.
So who would draft a, a proper proclamation, then?
Well, that would happen after we put it on the agenda.
So it still has to be done, though?
Correct, but it would have to be, someone would have to bring it to the table.
Right?
Right.
You're saying they would have to have three people agree to bring it to the table?
No. I mean, just like anything, if you want to put something on an agenda, you have to have four votes to add it to an agenda, or the majority of whoever's in attendance.
It would be treated like new business. You'd come and you say, I received a request or a proclamation for this, I'd like to put it on the next council agenda, that takes a motion and a, and a process, and then it goes to the next council agenda, in which case, the proclamation then would be presented to the council.
Then they would start drafting it at that point, versus prior to that point. Right now, they can go to the city staff and, um, start that process, and then it's shown to us as a draft on our agenda. It's literally the one of the only things that gets added to our agenda, other than the city manager, that does not go through this way, as I read it.
Well, what I like about it is it follows the same procedure as any other new business that comes into the city. The council agrees upon an agenda, that's the starting point, whether it's a proclamation or, uh, you know, somebody's, uh, I have one I'm bringing to the council tonight, you'll hear about one council at that time, somebody emailed me and asked a question, so I'm bringing it before the council tonight, can we put this on a future agenda to discuss? So it kind of takes the same process as anything else that occurs before the council, so.
Right.
Question for, um, Ms. Baker, so they can't email you and say, can I have this proclamation, um, in two weeks, or I have this proclamation already written, 'cause I feel like, um, last three years, I'm not sure for you, Madam Mayor, longer, um, it's usually the same proclamations year out, and if I remember, there's only been one proclamation that's been denied, um, through my time here, so, um, to answer my first question, uh, have they gone through you, um, Ms. Baker?
Yes, the current process would include coming to staff, and then following that existing policy. I think what I'm hearing is maybe something different for the process.
Because it, it's a vetting process, before it gets to us, right now.
I get multiple emails from national organizations, international organizations.
And we don't do those.
And we don't do, I mean, that's part of our policy, so, um, I just say, you know, we don't do those things, I just email them myself, because I'm not going to bring it to council, so.
But if they're local, then they, they should have our attention, you know?
Well, they would, if they, if they just email us and say, I'd like to have that, and we can bring it to council.
I think, too, the, the other thought I had is, as I read this, was going, we get our agendas on Friday, right? And on our agenda on Friday, and it's oftentimes three, four o'clock in the afternoon going into a weekend.
For which there is no complaint.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, right, there's the agenda. And, and now, let's say there's a draft proclamation on there, that we might go, I, I don't know if I liked this wording, we could probably tweak this a little bit, there's no process now for us to do this, we now have to vote on this proclamation at that meeting, make a whatever scene on something, or not, because we can't change it in the meeting.
Why can't we?
Because it's being prepared to be read.
Well, I know, but we could say, this would be okay with these changes, that's what we're doing, we're making a, we're voting on whether we're going to use, do it the next week, or whatever, to vote on it, so, or to have it, the proclamation done, so we could always say, yes, we like this, this is fine, but we need these changes made.
Well, but this would allow us to have that conversation prior to going on our agenda, I guess is my thought, as I read it, I'm going, it would allow us to say, hey, we can tweak this, or tweak that, um, or if there is no proclamation, well, we need to, you know, 'cause I remember, I had, like, I had, uh, the mom with the parents one, she did not have a proclamation.
Right.
I had to work with her to form a proclamation. So anyways, I, I, I say that, 'cause I just think that would help. As I looked at this, I went, that makes sense, everything else goes that way.
Any comments? Any other comments or questions by council?
I just want to know, do you see any issues with?
The only question I have, and maybe it's a clarification, so my understanding is, is that someone will bring a motion to place on an upcoming council agenda, a proclamation involving Lawyer Appreciation Day. And, and that, that obviously would be voted in favor. And, um, then, at that point, it will move through the regular channel, which would be the city manager making sure that it meets the policy, or is your vote, the, it does, you have all, it hasn't been written, so we don't know if it meets the policy. So I assume it means that we'll, staff will work with the person to create the proclamation. If for some reason it does not meet the policy, we will have to communicate to you that it does not. But I just want to make sure that there's still the, going back to the city manager and going through all of the ten or twelve criteria associated with proclamations, and then it would go in front of you. So essentially, it's just a different order of what we're doing right now.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think it allows us time to, I mean, again, going to our agendas are on Friday, um, I try to take a Saturday off, Sunday and Sunday, um, and so really getting to be able to go, well, on Monday, I have to go find this person who wrote this proclamation, it doesn't happen, right? So, um, I think this would give us opportunity to work with this. And I, you know, I read your, I read this piece, I mean, this seems pretty straightforward, reading, so.
All right. Could I make a motion now, or do I have to?
You may.
Okay. Well, then I move, uh, to amend the City of Yakima proclamation issuance policy that was adopted February 7th, 2023, via R 2023 023, with the policy changes provided to take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
Second.
Right, so we'll bring that back to the next council meeting for the, with the actual language for you, based on your memo.
Okay. So, um, there's been a motion, a second, I'm not going to repeat the motion, because I can't get that many words out at once.
It's on the bottom.
Okay, I'm sorry. So there's been a motion to amend the City of Yakima proclamation issuance policy adopted February 7th, 2023, via R 2023 023, with the policy changes provided to take effect immediately upon adoption. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero, so we'll direct the staff to do that. Thank you, Sarah, very much for your help and clarification. Okay, we're moving on to the next part of the adjus, uh, judgment, which is, um, an update. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're, yeah, we're making judgments tonight.
The next.
Agenda item is a city manager update, and I believe that Ms. Baker has some announcements for us.
I, I do, good evening, council mayor. Um, I wanted to kind of go back in time six months, it's hard to believe I've been here six months now, and, uh, in my interview, I was asked, what was the number one thing I needed to work on, and I said, a sustainable budget for the City of Yakima. And boy, has that been right where I've been for the last six months, and definitely, job one. So right now, just as a reminder where we're sitting and what we're doing, our budget committee is underway, we have our fourth meeting tomorrow night, Mike Bailey's leading that group, it's going very well, great questions, you appointed really smart people, thank you for that, so that's, that's moving along, yes. Part of the process that we've talked about as well is the survey of the public, and that's what, what I wanted to talk about a little bit tonight. This is, uh, I want to be real clear about what this is, it's a survey, but in the survey, there are some very challenging things for this community to consider, and I know that, you know, for the staff out there watching, and, and for anybody listening tonight, this is just a survey, and, and I want it to, to be that, and not anything more than that. You will understand when you get in it and see what I'm talking about, there are very difficult decisions in this survey, it's a nine million dollar problem that we have, and it means that we have to look at large items in our budget and consider them. Uh, we have, um, a general fund problem that includes really important things, that's streets, parks, fire, and our police department, those are extremely important things that our community counts on, and eighty-two percent of the general fund budget is public safety, and you're going to see a list that includes some public safety items that I don't want to put on a list, I don't want to put any of these things on a list for the community to consider, but that's what we're doing, we're going out to the community, and we're going to ask those questions and get feedback, and we'll bring it back to you. So that is going to be happening later this week, and, and you'll get a look at that survey first, the budget committee will look at it tomorrow night, and then I'm doing my personal outreach, um, to the community, I met with our retired firefighters, it was awesome. I also, uh, talked today, this morning, a little bit about it, nobody's seen what I'm talking about, but I, you know, they will see soon enough, I'm, I'm hoping to reach community groups across this city, uh, do those town halls, anywhere that anybody wants to ask me questions, I want to be available for that, because I think it's really important to have that community education. You know, folks need to understand, um, what it costs to do these different services that we're providing in this community, it was a surprise to me, so, um, it's going to be an interesting conversation for our community to be having, and I, and I wanted you guys all to know that's where we're headed in the next few days. So, um, again, it's a survey, everyone, it's just a survey, okay? And then, um, YVCOG is working with me on a, um, scope of work for them to go out in the community and go to where the people are, so we will have this survey available online in our normal channels, but we'll also be having their outreach person, if, um, we can get that arranged right away, go to the basketball games, and, you know, church groups, and anywhere where people are, and get that feedback there, to cross the city, all of your districts, far as wide, as far and wide as we can get, to get the most responses possible. Um, I'm going to be doing downtown Rotary on Thursday, and I'll hit all of the big community organizations in, over the next month or so. So budget has been where I have been working a lot, but I also, um, know that all of you guys already know, and the people on TV may know, too, um, I'm thinking long-term about our community and how to get us thriving again, and so while I've been focused very much in the day-to-day stuff, um, I'm still thinking about the future and trying to make Yakima a better place to live. And so, um, when I got here six months ago, um, I did not immediately hire an, an assistant city manager, and that was intentional and possibly a crazy thing to do. Um, I had a lot of people reach out to me, um, including, you know, Dick Zase, and Dave Zabel, and other city managers, and said, like, you have the eleventh largest city in the state, you are crazy, you need help, stop, you're going to burn out, so, um, I just want you to know.
Will you burn out?
No, I'm still going strong, I'm still going strong. But, um, it was really important to me to have that learning process, have everything cross my desk, be forced to deal with all of the different problems myself, so that I understand what's going on around here, it takes a while to figure that out. So I've been drinking that fire hose, and, um, it's not always easy, but I have definitely learned a lot. So the good news is, help is on the way. So I am here tonight to announce, and we're going to get up on the screen, our assistant city manager, who is coming, he'll be here, um, March, well, you'll see him March 18th, he starts on the 17th. I want to tell, tell you a little bit about him, he has a really great background, um, he has done administrative work before, so you see that deputy county administrative position in Benton County, he's from the region, which is super important, um, he has twenty-five years of economic development experience. Uh, he has worked at Port Pasco, you see up there, um, also, uh, Richland, Benton County, um, and then, you know, I'm not too sad to say I stole him from Spokane. Sorry Spokane, if you're watching.
Great.
But he has a, a great background to get this community moving, and focus on the issues that maybe haven't been addressed in a while. So I'm talking about revitalization, downtown, mill site, are we ready to go on the mill site? We have an environmental engineer background with him as well, so he understands the environmental concerns, so I think that will be very helpful with the mill site. Um, but, you know, the airport as well, Port Pasco, so, I mean, good experience, very excited to have him here, and I'm still going to drink the fire hose, I'm still going to do day-to-day operations, but I, I'm, I know the staff is, you know, I've been the funnel, and staff has come to me and said, hey, um, you need help, it's a lot, so, I'm excited, and I just wanted to share tonight, this is your new assistant city manager coming soon, Gary Baloo.
Nice.
Very nice, thank you.
How do you say his last name?
Baloo.
Baloo.
Kind of like, what movie was that?
Cat Baloo.
Well, thank you for that good news, we appreciate it.
Jungle Book.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Now we move to item 11, which is other business. Does anyone, uh, have any other business for council this evening?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I would like to move to direct staff for a cost-benefit analysis of animal licensing fees and the animal control, how much we're contributing to animal control, uh, just put on the agenda a future study session.
Second. Sorry, I was thinking.
All right, so we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Bergen, a second by Deputy Mayor Brown, to put on a, uh, direct staff to bring to a future study session, um, a discussion about the animal licensing fees, is that correct?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Any other council person? If not, I have something, I got an email in today from, um, somebody who said she'd like the city to discuss raising the number of backyard chickens permitted. Four, four is too little to supply my family of six during this egg crisis.
So what would be a number?
Well, that's not the decision tonight, so I am making a motion to bring, uh, to, um, direct staff to bring a review of the code and recommendations back to city council at a future meeting.
Second.
Thank you. So I made the motion, I have a second from Councilwoman DCO, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, council, that motion passes. All right, let's talk about dogs, too.
Chickens and dogs.
Chickens and dogs, okay.
Oh, man, it's going to be an animal night.
Any, uh, animal house.
Animal farm.
Any other new business for council this evening?
I don't have any new business, but I just want to say thank you to this council for, for just having a discussion tonight, it's, it's been a good discussion, and I appreciate the discussion, I also, again, want to say thank you to our county commissioner, Count Curtis.
Absolutely, thank you.
For being here, and being here, like, over and over and over again, um, you know, I want to say thank you to that, and, you know, it was a great discussion tonight, um, we're all passionate, and we're just trying to do the best thing, so, thank you.
We're all passionate for the best thing for our city, so, all right. If there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our, uh, next council study session on March 11th at 5:00 PM here in the City Hall Council Chambers.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, a second by Councilwoman DCO, to adjourn to the next city council study session on March 11th, 2025, 5:00 PM here at City Hall. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's good, because you've been.
Aye, aye, aye.
And you may stay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.